Yeah.
Here we go. We say for tonight's meeting. I've just been breaking the talk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So. Well, this is great.
Some of these trees just do that. You can start sinking them. What's it gonna stay out?
It's fair enough getting short.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we have to clear the building. Go to your vehicles, please do not leave. You're sub-directed by the Emergency Service Personnel. Main interest is out of the back of the building. Thank you very much. And. Good luck.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm requesting approval for the board meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
And change the divisions to divisions.
Got it all. Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
So good. Tax notice?
Uh, tax sale, yes. Okay, this is a notice of tax sale to the village of Patchogue. Whereas the receiver of taxes of the village of Patchogue, New York, has this day returned this warrant and tax roll for the year 2024, 2025, and had delivered to the Board of Trustees of the village of Patchogue herein an account of the taxes remaining unpaid, amounting to $159,122.61, without the penalty and fees of $35,703.2, and descriptions of the, upon the list together with the amount of taxes so assessed and interest thereon. Resolve that the unpaid taxes or tax rulings set forth in the account of the receiver of taxes of the village of Patchogue, New York, dated December 31st, 2024, shall be collected by sale of such taxes as provided by Section 1452 of the Real Property Tax Law, such sale to be held on the 27th of February, 2025, at 10 o'clock in the courtroom situated at 14 Baker Street in the village of Patchogue, New York. The proceedings thereunder to be provided in Section 1452, and a copy of this resolution certified by the village clerk, shall be transmitted to the treasurer of the village of Patchogue with account affidavit and certification of such unpaid taxes dated January 27th, 2025. Ron, am I required to read the actual?
No.
Numbers here. Okay, very good. Um, so that is.
Welcome to accept this presentation.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? Aye. Okay. You can just report.
Okay.
And closing.
Okay, the bills for the board meeting of January 27th, 2025, total $1,445,258.61. The five largest bills. Thomas Novelli, $487,840.10 for Phase 2 sewer extension. Pioneer, $356,022.53 for Phase 1 sewer extension. Tannenbrook Haven, $55,635.65 for landfill fees. PSE&amp;G Long Island, $27,671.35 for electricity. And H2M, $26,160.10 Phase 1 sewer extension. Uh, the total of the five largest bills is $953,329.63.
Just for, for the record, Thomas and Novelli, the Phase 2 sewer extension, Pioneer, the Phase 1 sewer extension, and H2M, Phase 1 sewer extension, all with ransom, which those by themselves are almost said how is that, most of those they don't know that.
Mr. Mayor, would you happen to know are we close to closing the book on Phase 1?
I think, I think they'll ask me. I think that's the last thing. And, uh, Novelli. It's three quarters of the way through.
Oh, yeah, they're very far along.
They're moving.
Moving pretty.
Moving, moving more quickly, I think, than Phase 1. It's not as big a force.
We have two contractors on Phase 2, so this is just the infrastructure, this still all the house connections. We're adding.
And if. As you remember, we, we got out to bid for landfill fees, and, uh, we, we are going to another contractor in 60 days. And it goes from on $11 a ton down to $26 a ton. You don't understand. A motion. Motion to accept. Any questions for others? Aye. Here.
Keep reading. Run an alternate. Oh, no, I have. Um, you have the cash balances too. And I believe the one request from Ron is, um, on the agenda to be covered a little bit later on the evening. So we're done. Uh, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, January 27th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the municipal building, 14 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Patchogue to amend Section 41514J of Chapter 415 of the Village Code to prohibit stopping, standing, and parking on Dock Street. By proposal of a law, copy of which is on file at the office of the village clerk at said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
The background is Dock Street is a small street, the Walk of Whitewood Street. Which remember the, the length of this building. And, uh, the Tannenbrook Haven, at our request, requesting the neighbors also, are blocking up the transport after, I think, some.
Someone said 3:00 PM. 3:00 PM. I saw a sign on it that said 3:00 PM, who's gay?
Whatever is, because people going down, and kids are going down, with cars racing, and all sorts of nefarious stuff. But that being said, once it was locked up, those people that liked to go to, they were part of the introduction. So it's causing great problems for the people that live. They're looking within the vicinity.
Is this prohibition set for residents of that Dock Street area as well, that there will be absolutely nothing?
They, they come see the way you give permits.
Just for them.
Yeah.
Well, proposal is no parking.
Yeah.
Basically.
Right, so that's what my question is. Are the residents okay with that not being able to park in front?
They don't want to.
They requested it specifically and didn't say anything about permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Why say no parking, is it?
Yeah. Well.
It's what we do.
It would be amended if it has to in the future, or change it to permit only if it becomes an inconvenience for the residents. But the, the proposal and request for tonight is no parking completely.
Parking, no standing, no stop.
Correct.
Period.
Correct.
There aren't that many residences on the, on Dock Street. It's a short street.
Any comment from the board? Motion?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Aye. If we have a presentation coming, we see environmental association. I want to ask this, who's has some opportunity.
As well as trustee Keys, this is really his project, but I've kind of jumped in on it a bit, and I do have some of my students in the audience this evening, because I'm so, so very proud of them and the hard work that they have done, because they've been following SeaTuck very closely um, with all of the different projects that they're associated with, but most importantly was the oysters. So that's why they're here in the audience today.
Which ones are your students?
So my students, would my students like to come forward?
Stand up.
Welcome.
Great.
So we're so.
Come front, sit front. It seemed bad. Uh, that's it. I get extra credit for this, Donald.
Extra credit. Yes, I'll let trustee Keys introduce.
Thank you, trustee Brickman. We have Chris and Taylor and Connie here from SeaTuck. So glad to have you guys here. So I was got to see the presentation the other day, which I think uh, all of you will find extremely interesting as well. Did what we call Project Sport, any SeaTuck and Patchogue's oyster restoration test. Very interesting, very exciting for us. We're going to incorporate it into our Boxing Rec program. Shout out John Bojack, his, um, unofficial current events reporter, who did a nice little piece this morning on his blog, I don't know if anybody happened to notice it, but thank you, John, appreciate that. We're going to double his salary for that, by the way. And so I think then you're going to find this very interesting, and, uh, you know, I don't want to speak too much, because obviously the experts will be able to tell you far more than I can. So Chris, Taylor, Connie.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
Sure.
Yes, please. Thanks.
It looks like it disappeared, Val.
It disappeared.
I'm just gonna.
Sure.
So while we're waiting for this, just to comment, the unpaid taxes of $159,000 is 0.01% of our tax collected. Which is like.
It's good.
Amazing.
Front office guy.
It helps.
It's one of the key pieces.
I know. We have Kevin for words and me for numbers. Really good.
Absolutely.
And Joe, we have you for acting. And we're. Let's kill some fun.
There you go. There you go.
Very well.
Beautiful.
With 0.01%.
I don't know if it's broadcast. It's still here.
Yeah.
That's really.
To this. There it is. Okay, so that should be good.
Should be good.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so first of all, thank you so much for having us here. We're really excited to be here and to present on our project. Uh, my name is Taylor Larson. I'm an environmental educator for SeaTuck Environmental Association. And my colleague Chris Menenhousen, he is our Conservation Director. Um, yeah, and so for those of you who may be unfamiliar with who SeaTuck is, we are a local nonprofit organization whose mission is dedicated to conserving Long Island wildlife and the environment. And we do that in a myriad of ways. We have a conservation team built up of researchers, biologists, technicians, and then, of course, the education team, which I'm part of. And one of the best things about this project that we are going to be talking to you about today is that we combine all of our forces into this, uh, into this project. And so I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Chris, who's going to talk about the history of oysters in the Great South Bay.
And can you guys hear enough back there?
Yes.
For someone who's listening to the presentation, I'll make sure you guys really get to.
Great. Thank you, Taylor, and thank you, everybody. Very happy to be here. And I started talking a little bit about the history of the oysters, um, in, in the Great South Bay, uh, starting with, uh, the 19th century, um, regionally, pretty much. It was, oysters were very popular. They were, um, they weren't like a fancy thing you got at a restaurant like you do now. They were very common food, inexpensive. Um, for much of the century, um, working in middle-class families ate oysters up to, up to twice a week, um, just as their regular food. Uh, by mid-century, overfishing had greatly decreased populations, and there were not enough naturally occurring oysters to meet public demand. Um, and in our area, by about 1850, oyster farming began. So oyster farming back then, um, we, we, we didn't source seed from hatcheries, but instead moved, um, wild-set oysters from areas where they were setting well to areas where, um, they didn't always set as well, but would grow out, um, in, in a sufficient manner. Um, in, most of the time that was from the Eastern Great South Bay to the Western Great South Bay, um, and also from the Sound to the Western Great South Bay. Um, kind of where the oyster farms are now, like sort of around the Captry area closer to the inlet. Um, so that, that oyster industry grew steadily, uh, from about the 1850s through the, um, early 1880s, and then really boomed and became huge, um, with, with leasing of underwater lands and things like that, um, through about 1910. And then, uh, by 1920, we had increased industrial pollution that reduced seed availability, especially over on the Sound side, and kind of marked the beginning of the end, um, for our oyster industry at that time. Um, in, in 1931, there was a storm that opened up the Marriage's inlet, uh, for the first time, and the increased solidity in the bay allowed for, um, oyster drills, which, um, oyster drills are, still exist today, unfortunately. They're, they're a, a small, um, invasive, um, carnivorous snail, and they, um, killed the oysters. Um, and then we also had a, um, a hurricane in 1938 that covered a lot of the oyster beds with silt, um, and sand. And then oysters, um, as, as well as clams, over the next 20 years, um, from that time forward, um, faced a lot of challenges because of nutrient pollution. And then in our area, they were functionally extinct by, uh, 1950. So next slide, please. Um, so I will quick, quickly, just briefly, talk a little bit about why oysters are good for the environment and why we should try to restore them and, and bring them back. Um, number one is water filtration. So oysters improve water clarity and quality. They're kind of like, um, if you can imagine, the, the kidneys of our estuaries. Um, one adult oyster can filter up to 50 gallons of water, uh, in, in each, each day, uh, removing pollutants and excess nutrients. Uh, they do this by eating, eating algae. Um, that process also can allow more sunlight, less turbidity, and more sunlight to reach the bay for, for, for benthic or, um, grasses, specifically grasses that grow on the seabed. Also, they provide shoreline stabilization, um, protect our coastlines from storms and wakes, um, and also they create habitat reefs, um, oyster reefs create this kind of three-dimensional, um, living structure that, that juvenile finfish and crabs and things kind of like, um, hide in and, and survive them. So, um, Taylor's, and I'm going to talk about the education aspect of this.
Yeah, great. So, uh, our oyster-based education program, um, tangentially entitled The Isle Program, which stands for Introducing Students to Long Island Estuaries, uh, which wouldn't be, have been made possible without the support forced by the NAP Sweezy Foundation. We're really, really excited about this program that is going to bring local students to the local estuary, specifically here in Patchogue, such as, uh, the Shorefront Park location. Um, so those schools specifically are returning Patchogue Medford and Bayport Blue Point School Districts. And so what the students are going to be doing essentially, they're going to be tasked with growing oysters, learning about the importance of that. But, but oyster in itself is really going to act as the narrator of our educational lessons and field trips throughout the, uh, throughout their specific estuary and their time with these oysters. And so I don't, um, when I talk about oysters, I don't mean specifically the oysters that you think of when you order from a restaurant. That's what we call the single-set oyster. You just get one oyster in one oyster shell. We are talking about, we will be working with spat-on-shell oysters, which, as you can see in the photograph from the left, those little dots, might be a little hard to see, but those little dots are those, are the spat on the shell. Spat is another term for baby oysters. And those individual oysters are going to grow into be, of course, their own oyster on that same shell. As you can see, the progression of these oysters are growing. And then you end up with this cluster of adult, mature oysters. Um, and that is what we are going to end up with. This is the goal, is what we are going to be growing with the students. And so the students that I'm talking about specifically, this program is going to target elementary and secondary school students. Um, and not only are we going to be working with the students, but we are also going to be working directly with the students' teachers through a series of workshops to enable them to feel confident, um, about educating their students on this important topic. And so we're going to be doing that through the teacher workshops, like I said, but also through a series of in-classroom activities as well as field trips. And so the students throughout all of this are essentially going to learn how their day-to-day lives intertwine with oysters in the bay. And so when they go to, on their first field trip to Shorefront Park, which is where our oyster grow-out station is going to be, essentially, we're going to have cages in, in this, uh, part of the bay. And each class is going to get their own cage of oysters that they are, um, they will learn how to, uh, be oyster growers and, and learn about the importance of that and how they directly correlate with health of the bay and what it takes in order to, uh, grow healthy oysters. And so they'll be doing that, uh, through the means of measuring the growth of oysters, utilizing scientific equipment and data sheets, and then along the way discovering other species that also call the bay home, um, and how those interact with the oysters and how they depend on each other as well. And all the while, making key observations and essentially becoming stewards of the bay. They feel confident to relay this information in their daily lives to the people that also call this place home and directly impactful bay as well. And so at the end of this year-long educational program and this year-long year of oysters being grown in cages, we're going to have an end product of mature oyster shells. If you think back to that cluster of oysters, right, that's essentially what we're aiming to achieve, to grow. Um, and so Chris, I'm going to hand it back over to Chris, who is going to talk about what we plan to use, uh, use those oysters for.
Thank you. Um, so there will be approximately, uh, 10,000 animals per year going into the water initially for this project. There will be some mortality, um, and, you know, we, we think it's important to, um, and, and we're really excited for the opportunity to provide the village, um, with a way to keep the animals here i- in the village. Um, and it will be both, um, for, for oyster restoration, but all, and, and also a way to kind of work with the educational process. Um, so we are, um, hoping to do that in two ways. Um, if you look at the picture over here on the right, you kind of see this, this, um, oyster on-bottom sanctuary. Um, the way that they're built is you put a cured base of, of oyster shell, and then this spat on shell um, go on top of that, and then there's, there's going to be a perimeter of bags of, of shell to kind of keep everything in place, um, with currents. If you look on, on the left, this is, this is a up-close shot of what, um, that will likely look like, probably within, by the second year. The animals will be reaching, um, adulthood and, and be somewhere in the ballpark of 2, 2 and 1/2 inches. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is just a little, a picture of, um, where it, where it, it, it could be. Um, we, we want it to be somewhere in proximity to Mascot Dock and the living shoreline. Um, but I just want you to look, look at that box and, and picture it in your mind for the next slide. Um, so this, this is just an, you know, th- this slide and the next one show you how, how we're going to go about building this. Um, if you look at the top-left photo, you see these three individuals floating, um, from a boat, um, in, into the water, that, that bag shell perimeter. So, um, on the, on the right side, that, that's what it would look like just with the perimeter. And the next layer, can think of it almost as like a oyster reef lasagna of sorts. On the next layer, you have your cured shell, and then on top of that, um, is your spat-on-shell. Um, and then finally, um, on this topic, this is just an example of one of these going in. Um, if you see on the boat, you've got, uh, potato sacks of spat-on-shell, your bag of cured shell. And then if you look in the water, you've got divers, and they have those PVC pipes that are sticking up at the perimeter that shows them where, where to put the shell. Um, the other method that we are super excited about, um, is an, an experiment and using what we were calling a habitat paper. It's cured, uh, cured blank oyster shell, um, glued on with a marine-safe epoxy to papers, like the same type of papers you would get at Home Depot to if you were building a small patio at your house. Um, and our proposal is to, um, place, to, to put these onto the wall intertidally. So that means that instead of being on the bottom, which would be underwater all the time, they would at high tide be covered by the water and at low tide be out, out of the water and into the air. So it's really, um, an experiment to look at predation, which is, just means the predators that are potentially trying to kill them, um, and also looking at different fluctuations in temperature to gauge survivability. Um, next slide, please. This is a shot at, at almost low tide, um, kind of, you know, l- looking north on, on the living shoreline, shows an example of how, um, you know, we're going to, we're going to place these papers um, or organically within the rocks, so they're kind of just going to blend in. Um, and one, one small piece that I forgot to mention on the first slide is there's going to be in each location, four papers intertidally, and then four papers subtightly, so we have a control. So we can say, so we can compare them essentially. Um, next slide, please. Just shows, you know, in, in springtime, the, the beautiful coastline you guys down have, have down there now. And if you look, you know, it's, it's 1,300 feet, um, of, of linear intertidal. It's about 16 inches tall. So if this works, um, potentially in the future, there could be a way in, in, in a larger scale to incorporate potentially oysters into that shoreline. And, um, that's our presentation.
Thank you so much, though.
So thank, thank you so much. Um, I don't know if you have any questions now, or if you want to hold them for later.
Hold on a minute. It's not really a question, but I just want to congratulate you. I think this is a great project for Patchogue.
And of all the places. Thank you so much.
To have it in the South Shore, in Patchogue, if I can just make three quick comments about this, Mayor. First one is a little trivia question, maybe for the kids. Before, New York City had the nickname The Big Apple, right? Have you ever heard that name? What was New York City's name? It was tonight's topic.
Big oyster.
The Big Oyster, correct. Can you get an A+ in class? It was The Big Oyster. That was, that was trivia question number one. Trivia question two was one of the, if you read one of the original articles of the incorporation of the village of Patchogue in 1893, courtesy of, to, to trustee Brickman's dad, the original drive to incorporate the village of Patchogue was to pave South Ocean Avenue, because the complaints were it was paved with oyster shells. And the oyster shells were expensive to have to replace, and they wanted to get the road paved properly before it was done. All the way up to Main Street was oyster shells. That was interesting.
Most driveways were as well.
Yeah, right.
My grandfather's driveway was.
Amazing. The, the, the history of it in Patchogue. And then the last point was that oysters was the first fast food coming out of Pappy Dog that they pickled oysters, and they would keep for six months. I don't want a six-month-old pickled oyster taste in life. But they would travel all over the place, and then you sometimes can still find the ceramic bottles they were placed in around. This is an interesting little patch of time.
That's a project coming.
Yeah. Right, try to pickle them, sell them for the class.
And Brian, Brian, how tall would the oyster piles in New York City?
Right, enormous.
Eight, 12 feet.
Right, yep.
Eight, 12 feet.
Nope, not hot dog stands, oyster stands.
Piles of oyster shells.
Amazing stuff.
Trustee Keys, how is this going to integrate with us?
Yes, that's, that's the next part of it. I know that the schools, you guys have worked with the schools, and we're looking to integrate with Oxy Rec, make it part of a summer program. And I know you, you guys already offered to, uh, kind of train our councils, uh, and so that one day we'll be able to use this as not an educational, but to be assistance to you as well as, you know, make a project succeed. And just to be clear, this is not, uh, I know there are oyster bombs. I know trustee Keys is very interested in that as well, uh, to reproduce. This is not that. This is the, the, to clear the water and those kind of things, more environmental, uh, and that's what we're hoping to, our kids who come to our summer programs, Oxy Rec, will learn that from you guys. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Question. Someone else. The shells that are in the bags, does that, the bag go away, run away?
Um, no, they don't go away right away. They, um, they biodegrade. It takes a number of years. When, um, the goal of these reefs, at first, is to kind of make that perimeter wall so, so they don't, you know, large current or wave doesn't come in like that all the way. But, um, the way that, if you, if you remember the picture of that, kind of like that clump of, of what the animals look like, of growing on this, on this fat-on-shell picture, um, the goal is for them to reproduce, the broadcast spawners, um, which means that they, they broadcast reproductive material out into the. Which means that they broadcast reproductive material out into the water home. And then meet up and form, to put it just in a simple way, a baby oyster. And then that sets down. And they like to set on oyster shell. That's why we use that as the base. Right? So it's just, it's kind of like it's a survival thing. If an oyster is surviving and living well and down in a reef and you're a very small baby oyster trying to figure out where you're gonna land for the rest of your life, you're like, it's a pretty good bet that landing on where an oyster shell is already surviving and thriving is a good idea. So that's why we use it for the base. So the goal would be that, that over time, while those bags, while the mesh biodegrades, that you have what's called recruitment, which is more oysters joining the reef. And it kind of makes like, it kind of cements it all to that. So within like, you know, somewhere around like, I think like six to 10 years, in ideal scenario where you had good recruitment, it would kind of just be like a reef, like you think of a coral reef, like it's a hardened but living structure. Does that make sense?
But we're never gonna eat these oysters.
No, no, these oysters are not for consumption. There's gonna be signage, you know, down at the dock and by the wall. First of all, celebrating and talking about, you know, the restoration efforts and but also reminding people in multiple different languages that you shouldn't eat these animals. We do have at this time, oyster farms creating oysters for food. But that's out in what's called open water. You can look on the New York DEC's website, just do a Google search. It comes up with a map showing your open areas and your closed areas and when you have seasonally closed areas. So the example of a seasonally closed area would be on the north, on the bay side of Fire Island. In the winter, it's open. But in the summer, when you have lots of folks going over to the beaches, taking the ferries and sewers and sewer issues, it becomes closed. It's, if you look at the map, it's just like circles right around where the towns are on Fire Island. But at this time, you know, we're all hoping that, you know, a lot of the restoration efforts going on fix the water at some point. But at this time, it's not safe to eat an oyster that is on, close to our shore. You have to have more towards open water.
Okay, can I ask another question? If so is there, that's actually what you're gonna have to prevent people from taking them? Is we'll have like a number to contact if you see someone doing something because I live right down there. Mascot Dock has a lot of people doing crabbing. If people know there's oysters, someone's gonna say, oh, let me go over there and take a look.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. We, yeah.
I would think that's a great idea. We did something we haven't thought of of course, especially against someone who lives close to there, you know what's going on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
No, that's a really, that's a great idea. They're not gonna look like something that you expect to see or to play. Like they're not a single solitary animal. We're gonna look like, like they, like, it would be hard to shut them. It'd be hard to figure out. You have to have like a pick and like.
Where there's a will, there's a way, so.
That's true. Yeah. The number would probably be the DEC and that's a really great idea. So thank you. We'll do that.
I did a similar project with Sabrina Yat and Bob.
Oh.
For motorings. Is there any way that the public, like, I could do this? I know it's a camper and everything else, but because I knew how to come in and do it and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so we are going to be working with the students through the school year. However, that leaves opportunity and work that's necessary to maintain oysters in the off-season and the summertime. So C-Tuck is going to rely on our own staff, but as well as volunteers to help and get things. So that is definitely something I'm sure can also speak for that as well. Something that we want to develop and can be even more involved in, you know, in those response and that is even if they seem to say, yeah.
Thank you so much. Yeah, well, make sure you have our contact before we go and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Well, for the record, there's been various members of this board have been involved with field trips back when the weather was warmer. We had a very thorough presentation, I think it was about a week ago. That was longer than this one. So I guess the next question, Trusty Keyes, do we need a formal approval?
Yeah, no, we're good. We're good to go.
Yeah, okay.
We're the floating docks, which we already installed with the hundreds, right?
I know the board is in agreement that this is a plan that we definitely want to be involved.
We've already approved it. You know, going into you guys and we're looking forward to, like I said, Apox direct. Particularly excited. This will be good for our summer programs down there as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, for our kids and you already know that whatever we can do to make this, you know, progress smoothly.
We'll expect you back in a couple of years with the progress reports.
Hopefully they'll order this.
Happy, happy to do it. Yeah.
As always does.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to the collaboration.
Mr. Mayor, good luck. I intend to just picture with C-Tuck.
Absolutely.
What do you wanna do right here?
Yes.
Yours, I have some parents, maybe take our pictures.
It's good?
Good. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Be in touch. Thank you.
Kennedy is not here this evening. Savannah. Chamber of Commerce report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's such a nice to see you. Happy Monday. Don't have much of a report. I'm just here to solely request a date for the Pride Parade for Sunday, June 8th. It would be I would assume 10:03 or 10:04 to people for the road closures.
Did I accelerate my rule? Okay, take a motion, request approval, set it on the wrong one. Sorry.
You're firm.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Joe. You know, I'm getting old now, right, Joe?
You've been. You're not getting old.
Thank you. Requested approval for the Greater Patchogue Chamber of Commerce to hold a Patchogue Pride Parade on Sunday, June 8th. Brand days to be determined from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM with road closure on Main Street between Route 112 and West Avenue. That's motion.
That's all I have. My niece was born today, so I've got her month in the hospital.
Thank you, congratulations.
I'm excited about my niece.
That's awesome.
Lovely. See you as always. I'll be back February 10th.
Good job.
Snuck up on me, Mayor. I was getting it all wound up with oysters. Yeah, yeah. I got a a report here from Tim and Jim.
Tim and Jim.
Tim and Jim, yes. Yes, we're giving gyms tonight. For the past two weeks, 15 field appearance tickets, 290 parking tickets, and 31 calls from dispatch. So thank you very much to people to call into our code enforcement offices and and public safety.
Good man.
Yes, it was. So again, we're there to help you. So if you have any issues with anything, call Patchogue. 475-1225. And I have one from Tim. Now, where'd it go? Tim, this is Tim. This is Tim. All right, it's been a pretty interesting place. They're putting together the vehicle package. The solar panel canopy lights should be turned on this week. With power to show progress on that project. We removed the problematic bollards at the court parking lot. So people will stop hitting them. That's nice. That's a good one. Hand out our first fun with snow last week. We had our first fun with snow last week. And not too much, but they were out there. Yeah, you got it. First, I think it's his first snow, right? But no, it was pretty good. The streets were on. My street was clear in no time.
They were good.
Right?
The villa for the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, in your parking lot, right? Clean, good. All right, let's see. And the sewers contracted just ordered the next 90 grinder pump units for residential carac connections. Through the pipes that's just placed so that in, so that in motion. I'm reading this just as it's written, so please don't, don't blind me. And he's got the connection for him. It says, good luck and make sure you say yes to everything on there tonight.
Okay.
So we've got a lot of work going on here in the Village of Patchogue between the highway department and thank Jim and Public Safety and Tim for keeping us updated on this. Any questions? If anybody has, just ask them. All right, Mr. Mayor, I have, let's see. Request approval to authorize the mayor to execute MS4 annual report interim progress certification for the stormwater management program. Motion.
I'll second that and point out that this is required by State Hall. At once a year, we have to the village has to approve its stormwater report. This is an in-report. Actually, not a lot is due this year. This is a fairly simple report. Other years, there'll be more detailed analyses of the village's attempts to remediate pollution being generated by stormwater that flows through the storm drains and into the bay and into the river. Local businesses have to comply with this as well. It's a little bit more detailed for municipalities, so an excellent report. And I second the motion and I move the question.
Thank you. I'd like to request approval to take $200,000 from the general, not me personally, but from the general fund surplus and $50,000 from the sewer fund surplus to purchase the following vehicles. Two new Ford Explorer SUVs. One Ford Escape SUV. One Ford Escape Hybrid SUV. One Ford 350 Super Duty Dump Truck. And one DynaPak CC90G Asphalt Compaction Roller. Motion. And I'd like to request approval to pay village engineer Timothy Norburn $5,000 stipend annually in December for additional sewer duties. I think that's a very we've gone from, we've added in the last year and a half. And with the 90 coming up, almost 350 homes. Plus the fact we're in the process of putting together the plant to rebuild the sewer plant and operating. To go from 800,000 gallons to a million two. These projects take it from Minnesota to Alachua. And Tim and I have talked about it. We mount, he's on salary. So he gets called up on a Sunday afternoon to go out, to go to the sewer plant. He goes to the sewer plant. And this was the agreement we had at the very beginning of this, but also at the very beginning of when we negotiated his contract. Two things that weren't in place with the big sewer project, rebuilding the sewer. Which by the expectation, they did get paid to do the plumbing they did with that. He's doing a great job. So that was a motion.
Second.
Aye. Mr. Keyes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell one members, ladies and gentlemen, a couple of brief things before I get to my wish list. Jackie mentioned the solar pounds of light we do. It's a wonderful idea I came up with. We're gonna have a little ceremony, lighting of the solar complex at the
When is that ceremony?
Yeah, well, we haven't set a date yet. We're gonna do, they're gonna do a trial and make sure they work.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah, we have an event, something that's not gonna work. But when the weather gets warmer, we don't wanna be out there when it's cold and we dock anyway. But anyway, we're pretty excited about that, so thanks for bringing that up. I know about our splash pad. I know not too many people think about the beach club right now. But when we built the splash pad, when we added the splash pad to the beach club, like every other project, you get the wilder addicts. And we decided that while we're at it, we're gonna upgrade the chlorination feeding system to both the pool and the splash pad. And actually, the wilder addicts generally add to the bottom line. What we discovered this year that the chlorination process for both the pool and the splash pad. Now, we added splash pad to the whole process. And we spent $11,000 less than what we did the year before with the, with the old chlorination system. So it's one of those things that the wilder addicts work, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's the process is easier, it's cleaner, it's neater. Nobody has to handle chemicals, you know, by hand, and it's been more economical. We are going to have our prime kickoff meeting on Friday. Prime is the fragmity. Fragmity removal is imperative to maintaining our ecosystem. So this is our prime project, which we're gonna, hopefully Friday, I think we're sitting there for Friday. Excuse me?
Encroach Prime, right?
Oh, yeah, exactly right. So and that's it on my wish list. And, you know, we'll obviously, I won't
Excuse your job. Just, can you just explain where you're gonna be doing that?
The kickoff meeting will be here?
No, no, the fragmities.
The fragmities at the ponds at the, at the Rydery, at Walbauer Complex, which at one time were nice open primes in the stream and they got taken out some pictures back in the 60s, I think it was. And now, I mean, you can barely see them in the choking. Yeah, I just can't wait for that project to get started, you know, and hopefully, you know, it's gonna be soon. So this will be the kickoff meeting for that. We're getting some prices in, which I mean, they're just kind of, nothing written yet, just some verbal quotes that we're getting, like, and the range is incredible. So hopefully this meeting that we have on Friday will now, I think, we'll Mr. Mayor, I would go into the hot people.
That'd be some weight.
Those things are pretty tough.
Everybody, if you turn your head, it will just go in.
Will that be maintained, I guess, right?
Yeah, actually, this is what we're looking for with what we've, hopefully, the contract they're doing, they've got DHP working on it. They're giving a five-year program where they will cut little by little and maintain a section at a time, replace the fragmities like a native grass, which won't be invasive. And we're gonna leave it to them to maintain for the first, hopefully, five years. Until our guys are like actually trained and then we all know what the heck we're doing there by any time.
Yeah, they're almost as bad as bamboo. The structure of the ground is extensive.
It's just incredible how when you don't realize it until you see those old pictures and stuff. And I remember the kids when they were little down there.
Somebody like entered a fish tank in there or something and started growing or is it just, is it native to this area?
Well, the fragmities, apparently not. I don't know.
Yeah, it's not native.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, I mean, they got here, they're very invasive.
But they're everywhere.
Establish themselves where.
And obviously, they're not easy to control as we see them. They're gonna take over. And so this is the first grasp, but us trying to, you know, get a grip on it and hopefully maintain it for the future. A lot of us will be here to see you too. But, you know, at least we'll know that we got the thing started and did the right thing, you know, so. Some of you, a lot of you will be here, but I
Joe, I plan on being.
Tom, you were here, I think, from there.
They invaded past, I was, that's immediate, but I was on the planet.
Okay. Anyway.
That was a pretty exciting one.
Refresh 92 every. I request the approval for Suffolk County to use Bay Avenue soccer field for the soccer program on Saturdays, 9/8, 11/8, from June 7th to August 30th. Motion. Do you request approval for Island Fast Pitch to utilize Roberto Clemente Field for softball practices on Saturdays and Sundays, 9 to 4, from April 5th to May 18th? Motion.
Second.
Aye. Do you request approval for the TYAA to use the Rydery Complex for the baseball and softball league, Monday through Friday, 5:00 P to 8:00 P, and Saturdays, 8:00 A to 2:00 P, April 1 to July 26th? Motion.
Second.
Aye. Do you request approval for the Suffolk County Police Department to host a NARCAN training class on Saturday, March 1, from 10:00 to 1:00 P? And a CPR training class on Saturday, March 8, from 10:00 to 1:00 P, 3:00 in Bay Motion?
Second.
Aye. Thank you.
I just wanna say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is such a wonderful class.
It is, yes.
It's such a wonderful class and, you know, this is great for our community. So many parents always want the CPR. And the NARCAN is always great to get that training, but the CPR is something that so many people And the NARCAN is always great to get that training, but the CPR is something that so many people need and stuff like parents, so.
Oh, yeah.
Do they have to pay or?
No, no, but there is a, I, I, I do wanna mention that you should call four seven five four three oh two, um, because they're registering people, so there is a cap on how many people you get in, and it is kind of filling up fast, so.
Four seven five four three.
Four three oh two, gotta pay, uh, get the stats and stuff, and, um, I, I'm sure we're not gonna be trouble filling that class up, but I'm sure we'll be able to do seconds if we have to, but, uh, Trusty Key, you're right, that is a very important, uh, informative classes and worthwhile.
And Trusty Keys, this is part of our continuing collaboration.
It is, it is a part of partnership with PL, which would, the soccer field, and I get, these things are back in field, so it's working out very well.
Nice.
Request approval for Northeast Stage to hold a Shakespeare in the Park at Shorefront Park Bandshell on Thursday, July eighteenth, seven to nine, rain day, to be announced. Motion?
Second. Aye.
Do you request approval for Patchogue and Youth and Community Services to utilize their rec room at three eighty Bay for their monthly meeting from six to nine, the following dates you have in front of you. Motion?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have. We'll see.
Good evening, everyone. I have a zoning and planning report for you this evening. Uh, tomorrow evening, we'll have our planning board meeting here that is posted up on our website. We have three new applications, including a Metro T-Mobile motorcycle merchandise and art store. And my personal favorite, where we're getting a spice and tea exchange on Main Street, where the old quench, now that they've moved away. Yeah, we'll have a spice and tea exchange on Main Street, so I'm super excited about. Uh, we also have four adjourned applications, including the hotel on that agenda tomorrow evening. Uh, we also have upcoming, and I just pushed it out to the website this afternoon, our zoning board of appeals will be held on February fourth. Uh, we have one new application, which is a redo of a fence, or a resident asked to reopen his application. One adjourned and two closed and held on that agenda. And that's your planning and zoning report. Um, that's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of quick things. Uh, request approval to set a public hearing to authorize a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law Section three C. That's a motion.
Second. Aye.
We wanna set a date. We already have one.
We have one on the tenth, I think, for the, um,
Yeah, we have the, yes.
The Kelly project, I believe.
We wanna do it on the twenty-fourth. By the way, it's plenty of.
One. That's why it's on.
It should be pretty short.
Yeah. It's like, yeah, so from now.
Yeah, so, yeah, I got a second from, um,
Twenty-four.
We, everyone said, yeah. It's a.
Oh. Everyone say aye?
Uh, aye. Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, request approval to change the date of the Bluehorn Brewery Shakedown event uh, to March seventeenth. I'm sorry, May seventeenth, from one PM to ten.
Second, and discussed on the motion quickly for those that are curious about this, I'm sure there are some. If they're thinking things over, we have, um, you know, correspondence from Jesse Smeja, the, uh, head of operations for the special events. The breweries decided to scale back this event significantly. Uh, they are admitting that they overreached, uh, a little bit last year, and it's being scaled back to a much, um, more low-key event, uh, than, than it was last year. So, um, um, that's the gist of this, of this request. So I move the question.
Thank you. Question?
Motion, second.
Aye. Yeah, that was, by the way, the result of, uh, conversation meeting with Pete and, uh, uh, events coordinator Billy Hilton. They've been working pretty steadily on this for quite some time.
And it's much appreciated.
Well.
It needed to be scaled down.
Last year was a travesty, right? So, that's all I have. Thank you.
No, we didn't.
Oh, no, no, they did all right.
I really, I feel you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, members of the public. I have your December twenty twenty-four Building and Housing Report, and tonight's, uh, report is the revenue report for that month. Uh, I'm going to give you the top five sources of revenue, going from the bottom to the top. Number five, safety inspection fees brought in sixteen hundred and ten dollars. My old colleagues on the planning board rolled in eighteen hundred and thirty dollars in planning board fees. That's number four. Number three, plumbing permits, uh, raked in two thousand and fifty dollars. Rental permits generated seven thousand nine hundred dollars in revenue, and the number one source of income, as it usually is, for the month of December twenty twenty-four. Building permits for a total of nine thousand and thirty dollars. Total revenue for the month of December, twenty-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars generated by the good men and women of the Building and Housing, um, Building Department. I was, um, uh, pleased to attend last, I think it was Tuesday, uh, the Chamber of Commerce's annual meeting and election of officers. And we congratulate all those who have volunteered to step forward to serve, uh, for another year, including President Joe Bennett. Uh, I was there both as a, as a member of this board and also as a member of the chamber and a business owner. I was there mostly to listen, and I did promise, um, uh, the members that I would report some of their concerns, uh, particularly coming out of the retail, uh, community, and, and I don't think it's any surprise to anyone who's business that, that the retail market is difficult. Uh, that's probably not going to change. Uh, it was reported that this past Christmas was the worst Christmas shopping season in memory, uh, for the downtown retail establishments. Uh, and that January, probably because the cold weather has, has not been, uh, much better. I pledge this board and every department within the village's cooperation to do everything that we can to remove any obstacles, uh, that are standing in the way of the, uh, this, the businessmen and women of our community. In particular, they had two requests that would be under our purview. Uh, they are asking for, uh, I'm just gonna report what they said, uh, perhaps a heightened, um, uh, activity or presence of, of public safety, coenforcement. It was intimated that some people have said they don't feel particularly safe. I, I disagree, but I'm just here to report what they said. Um, uh, downtown in the evening. Uh, they also said that there were some complaints about, um, that they'd like a longer, um, uh, no parking holiday, no, no parking B holiday during the holiday season. I told them, you know what? Come down next fall and we will be happy to entertain, uh, any, uh, any reasonable request that they have. And I told all the members, uh, that not necessarily have to rely on Sylvana to give a report. Anyone who has any problems or issues, please come down and share those with us, so we are, uh, aware of them. Uh, on my wish list, I would like to request approval for Steve Armstead, Paul Rohrbo, and Tom Anacaro to attend the New York Metro Fire Association Training Seminar on January thirty-first, which is this coming Friday, I believe, at the Nassau Coliseum at a cost of one hundred dollars per student, and that's a motion?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to request approval for, also for Steve Armstead, but also Mike Recchio and Bob Walbauer to attend the NYSBOC Rockland Training Seminar in Hillburn, New York from May fifth to the May eighth at a cost of twelve hundred and fifty dollars per student. That's a motion?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to just mention a couple of passings of note, uh, people that, uh, that had a major impact on life here in the village. I was saddened to learn recently of the passing of John Belzak Jr., a longtime, a member of village government. He was on the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, a frequent visitor, uh, and contributor to planning board meetings during my twenty-three years at that board. You know, we are a two-point-two-square-mile community, but we're also a, we're a community of, of neighborhoods. And John was particularly passionate about his West Patchogue neighborhood along the lake, uh, and, and would often come forward and make very good, uh, suggestions and, and was very helpful. So John will be missed. Uh, also, and these are two old, these are two old families here. Uh, Matthew Bailey passed recently. Matthew was very active in the, in the, um, Patrick Fire Department. But perhaps the most significant thing Matthew did, he was a strong advocate for the disabled. Um, the, he fought for three years to establish a handicap access ramp on the Patchogue Post Office. It was instrumental in the construction of, of sixty curb cuts throughout the village and the surrounding community. So Matthew made an impact on this, on this village, and, and he also, uh, will be missed. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have nothing on my wish list, but for the community relations, I just wanted to inform everyone. There, uh, Ecuadorian consulate election will be held February ninth. Yeah, and that is usually paid, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not, um,
Yeah.
It doesn't affect the village?
Yeah, they cover the costs of any, um, you know, manpower that we need to set up to be here during the time that they're here.
And they've been coming here for a couple of years and they're phenomenal.
Excellent.
Program.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, I'm happy that they're still having that connection with the Village of Patchogue to represent all of Long Island.
Do you have any issues with computer issues?
Um, not last year. That was like two or three years ago. I think since we got the fiber optic here, it's better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last year, I didn't.
Last year, there was no problems.
No problems. And.
Will you come down those days?
Yes, I would love to. And, um, just representing Suffolk County and Long Island for them to come here to Patchogue is just a wonderful thing, so.
Excellent.
So that is a nation, that's the national election on, on Sunday, February ninth.
To pick the president in Ecuador, but they do elections here, and they always choose the Village of Patchogue. And it's just a wonderful time because after that, they usually go to restaurants, stores, and just, you know, so it's, it's good. And then for the CDA, uh, CDA will be holding a public hearing next Thursday, so please stop by next Thursday. Um, the CDA has received approval to use CTVG funds to replace ADA ramps. If you have any questions, just stop by next Thursday.
Trusty Krill, is it also true, I may, I may be outdated this, I think the CDA is, is speaking a new member possibly as well?
Yes, I, um, yes.
So if anyone out there wants to put their, put an application in, send their resume in, that's something they could do?
Can you start giving resumes?
I think they, we started.
Have received them?
Yeah, we started receiving, and I think that's going through a process of, of choosing someone already, but we're very excited. And again, anyone who wishes to be part of the CDA or any other board, even if there's no option right now, just coming here and seeing the, the meetings is a great way how to introduce yourself to, to board members, so.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing to say.
No, I think I said enough to my.
I'm very, well, myself.
Well, I mean, right.
Timely, but perhaps not, especially the quiz.
That was what I said.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm an album side. If someone wants to talk.
Oh, you're not alone.
John Bojack, Gate and Axon Street. So, this is a continuation of tax abatement, part two.
But, Joe, you, you do realize that we have very little to say about this?
Yes, I do.
You can, you can talk what you want about it, but it's down Brookhaven. IDA.
Right. I, I understand that. Um,
Okay.
And, and in fact, my questions tonight are only about the village tax assessment and maybe a little bit about the Brookhaven tax assessment, but we don't really have to go that far, but mostly the village tax assessment. So if you just remember from the last time I was here, I was asking about what the, whether, what documents existed about the, uh, abatement, which, by the way, is due for some kind of decision next week. Uh, the IDA is meeting on Wednesday, I think. And there's presently, uh, one, two, three, maybe four different plans, two for fifteen years and two for twenty. And see how that all settles out on, uh, Wednesday. And then there's many other things that still have to happen. And I did send everyone copies of those documents, so you should have that. So when I looked over the tax abatement forms, which now, we now know is around thirty-eight million dollars is what they're seeking altogether, although that's not all from Patchogue Village. Uh, in fact, a portion of money from, most of, uh, bulk of that money is coming from abatement of Brookhaven Town taxes. Roughly in proportion, as you mentioned, uh, yourself, not the, uh, tail wagging the dog, it's the other way around. Patchogue Village is making about a quarter of the sum that's property taxes, and there's other incentives that they're getting to make up that thirty-eight million dollars. However, so in the packet, there is two tax assessment reports. One from the village from March of two thousand twenty-four. And the other one from Brookhaven, also in the same month. Um, and I have to tell you, I've been going through these documents now for four or five days, and it's, it's not easy for a layman to grasp all the different accounting techniques, all the different formulas. So if I'm gonna ask, I may ask some stupid questions here, but I haven't published a single word about this because I don't wanna say anything unless I know what the hell I'm talking about. Because, you know, people are gonna react, you know? People are gonna react, so I, I, I wanna be very careful in, in what I say, and I want to know exactly what I'm talking about, particularly if I say anything, because, you know, the people here, thirty-eight million dollars. Some people are gonna go crazy, even though as I have drenched myself in all this material, you know, I can, I could lay out for you the reason why that's worth it. Because of various public improvements that will occur in the village. And yet, of course, there's a counterargument that perhaps it's not, so. So, looking at the March fourteenth report from the village tax assessment. There were three components to the amount of money that is calculated to come up with the amount that the village is gonna be impacted, which is, in the end, it's four hundred and seventy-one thousand annually. That's before abating. In those components, there's the general tax rate, which is clear, it's all based on property values. Then we have sewer costs per apartment estimated at five hundred and seventy-five dollars times two hundred and sixty-two apartments, which comes to a hundred and fifty thousand. Is this an abated expense, sewer cost?
No.
No.
No. No, nor is the bid.
Yeah, the, yeah, nor is the bid, although, you know, I see they're gonna make a lot of money eventually, of course. You'll be ninety-eight years old, I will, when that takes place.
The bid, the bid is not a big.
What?
The bid is.
There's not a big, yeah, okay. So.
There'll be around two, two, back taxes.
So that's unabated.
Correct. And those are. Um, it's a, it's a fun. The sewer, they, they, they pay for what they use. That's true, but volume of water, is it adware?
Operational maintenance.
Okay, so.
Use charge.
Yes, because I see, I see on another part of the, of the village's website, we got this breakdown of sewer taxes. And I see sewer commercial, adware, use of fee, R, R, R A R, which is some kind of formula, but there's adware too. So those are the rates that are gonna be used, correct? All right, well, that, I find that very, I very find that good to believe.
We get the water, we get the water bills for all the properties, and then there, there's a number that X that they had wrapped with the water, and they get a bill.
Okay, well, that's good to hear because in the planning board, and actually, I'm gonna conclude after this. In the planning board, um, application that was made, it's hard to believe this all started back in, in two thousand twenty-three. Back then, in the application, they estimated that the, when the, up and going, that nearly sixty-nine thousand dollars, sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand gallons of water per day would be used at the facility, which comes to almost thirty million gallons for a year. So a usage tax was before superior to a flat rate in that instance. All right, I have questions about the Brookhaven taxes, but that, I guess that's belongs to Brookhaven. And that's it. I'm looking forward to what the hell, you know, I tried to send you copies, but you're undeliverable. I can't send you emails.
Now you can.
Oh, now I can. Thank you for setting the gears.
Stay indeliverable now.
I'm looking forward to seeing what happens with the great, uh, great story on Wednesday.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you so much for sharing information and, um, like you said, the current information, knowing fully and understanding fully as much as you can to share with the, with the community. So, thank you.
Right, and I just understand, I'm on record as supporting this project. I said it's a good project, but I've also said the deal for the taxpayers is, and you've said it too, it's gotta be a good deal too.
It does, for the, for the, just, just inside, everybody understands. It does, for the village, just, just in spite of the, the understands. The success of downtown is, a lot of it was driven by the Tri-Tech project, which was another IDA project. So, yeah. Over time, we're getting everything's surplus as we're entering the county. But when you take a look at the properties that have been developed over there, we get a piece of it, isn't it? You know, so, don't you get, and eat a little bit to get a lot, you know?
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Yes, young lady? Are you coming up to fellowship, continuing to do the planties and you're not resigning from the plant?
Did kind of retire from one of them, but this is a good news report. Darren, you've lived the village. So this is for a foundation report, Greater Patchogue Foundation. We received a PSENG downtown revitalization grant last year. We were able to spend almost $9,000 of it. We've got two new planters at the post office, 10 new planters added to Waverly Avenue, 18 use green on the spur and seven trees that we were able to plant in the park along the lake. They're very nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Every 10 years, they come around and offer us something and we manage to take advantage of it.
Report from your most used.
Yes. So the other one was Friends of Lakeview Cemetery, that we participated in a Robert David Leon Gardner matching grant. That foundation is dedicated to serving and preserving the historic aspects of Long Island. So we were able to raise $7,295 and they gave us $7,295. So this, this grant is particularly earmarked for headstone preservation and restoration. Now that's what that goes for.
I know we're in the public to be heard section, but Paul, you just reminded me, I saw a site over the weekend that I really haven't seen in a long time, ice fishing on the Great Patchogue Lake. But I'd like to basically, everyone out there watching, please exercise proper care when going on any ice lakes or ponds. It's a potentially dangerous thing and don't ever go out on an icy pond or lake by yourself. But it was pretty cool to see, actually.
Thank you.
It was a rescue of a meltwater.
There was a rescue, yes. That's not what you want to have. Yes, sir.
I was told I could come here to voice a concern on property tax subject.
On what?
Property taxes increases.
That we.
My first time here, I don't know the protocol.
Come up to them.
I have a thing about courts.
We're all friends, it's not a court, we don't. Come up to the podium and just let us know what your name and address is.
My name is Pasquale DeJesu. I live in Patchogue, now 24 years. I bought a home here back then. I was in Europe prior to that, Department of Defense as a representative. And I came here because basically it was, it was a good place for taxes, for property values and a place you can afford to live. Over the last 20 something years, I think my property taxes have gone from 4,800 to about 12 now. In the last two years, I noticed that they went up about 10%. In all my years.
You're talking about overall?
Overall, overall. I, I pay two sources. I pay the village in Brookhaven. I've spoken to the mayor of Brookhaven already once. He was out there shaking our hands online when we went to pay, thanking us for coming to call, you know? And I personally, and I don't know anybody else who's had an increase of over 120% in income over that time period. So there's a gap there that's growing. And, you know, we don't know how money is spent. That could be a concern later on, but my concern is to basically say a lot of us are getting into a crunch where we just can't pay because we're not getting it from this hand to give it to that hand. It's just a physical thing. And so, you know, I'm trying to see what we can do as far as the double in details and mechanics, people better acquainted with what happens, how you spend, how you contract for services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we may have to find a way to bite the bullet because the people on the bottom are doing it. Inflation is there, the increases are there. I, my pension, I'm retired now with the government and I haven't received any paid increases with the federal pensions. I just got on social security. That might give me an increase, but 1.5% compared to 10% in the last two years of overall, like you said, there's, there's, you know, if one part of the economic wheel gets weak and the other part gets heavy, you know, eventually one side breaks and the wheel doesn't turn for anybody. So.
Pasquale, I may. I'm in the same boat you are. And I've, I've been here 22 years and I've, and I've watched it, not the village. We're about 2% here.
I understand, but their, their bill increases also.
Yeah, the big hit, the big hit is our school taxes.
That's what the mayor of Brookhaven told us. He said, he said, the school tax, you have the vote on it.
We all have the vote on it.
And I told him, I said, we voted it down in the past and two weeks later, they voted back up again. You know, they have two or three votes. Now, if I was to hold a separate vote, a fourth vote in my basement with the community, would that count if I lowered, if I? Because you can have as many votes as we want.
I'm, you know, I'm totally 100% with you. I'm way worse off than you are.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
I, you know, I spoke recently to Councilman Foley, you know, and he said, if you can separate the school from the property, please come tell me because I'd love, I'd love to, you know, I'm all for it. I says, you know, if I could do that, maybe I should sit where you're sitting and you should sit where I'm sitting and I can get it done. I don't know, you know, what, all these positions of authority and what kind of power they have or what kind of leverage they have with the state. But the thing is, they have to make it known. And I mean, my ex, who I'm also paying child support to, I'm trying to maintain my house here for my child who's 15, to hopefully give her a home, you know, which grows up, the American dream, right? It used to be anyway. You know, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough nut and.
Maybe, maybe when I should get together, we should start a campaign about school taxes.
Well, we should because I told, he told me, he says, you should, you have the vote. I said, listen, you have no control over the school budget. He said, no. I said, how do you force a collection on a budget that you have absolutely no control over? Doesn't the mafia do that? They used to send Muslims out to make that collection law.
But we, we have like 2,250 students in our school system. And our budget is about $31 million. You can imagine.
It's called cost control. Europe, they have more socialized systems. The thing is, I've seen five schools shut down in East Meadow where I'm originally from. And with five schools closing down from the total that was 30 years ago, the tax has still gone up. It makes no sense to me. Then we, then we legalized the gambling industry for the purpose of paying school taxes years ago, but that didn't take a bite out of it. So, you know, I'm not here to look at the intricate details of what's going on in the mechanism. I'm just saying that as a result, eventually we're gonna say no. And we have no answer either, you know, like nobody else has an answer, neither do we.
Well, we all feel your pain. We're all taxpayers as well. I just cut a check for $26,000 for the first half of the town taxes for my business, which hurt. So we, we understand. The only thing we have any control over as far as your tax bill is concerned is the village taxes. And I've been on this board for a year and a half. And I have to be honest, one of the things I'm most impressed about the way this village government operates is its fiscal discipline and responsibility. We've held the line on taxes till fewer than 2% every year going back several years. We just got one of the most glowing reports from an auditor that I've, that's never been given to any municipality anywhere nearby. So the village does, it's its best. We do our best. And all the credit goes to actually not so much the members of this board, but the people who work in the Treasury Department that right now, as we speak, are beginning to crunch the numbers for next year. So you have our word that we will continue to watch as carefully as we can every penny they can spend. And the village government, a lot of that we do by obtaining grants to cover projects, to continue to make things happen and grow around here without the need to actually spend taxpayer money.
Well, there's been an increase in businesses here in the last 20 years. I would think that would have taken a chunk out of the response, you know, to shoulder the burden off the people. Unless, you know, more business means more taxes, in which case we wouldn't want more businesses. We want less of them. Whenever we take the tax down, you know?
Unfortunately, we don't get any of the sales tax. The only tax dollars that we get are property taxes. That's, and we manage to keep ourselves, as trustee we said, under 2%, I think it was 1.9% last year. Being honest with you, my first year in office, I think we raised it 14%. We raised it. The prior administrations decided zero tax increase for it, although you can't live on zeros. I can live on zeros.
Well, I respect the fact that you're probably doing everything you can, like you said.
We, we manage our money very carefully. You know, we're buying vehicles. We save the money to do that, the $200,000 towards those vehicles. We have a healthy reserve example, Hurricane Sandy. We didn't borrow a dime. We had reserves in place. Then we got reimbursement fee back, if there still could be a fee back.
Yeah.
So much of the way we manage our dollars, we manage our dollars, take care of the unexpected.
I'm thinking about the mathematical formula that they use, including Brookhaven, to regulate the amount that they collect. They used to say property values go up and that's what we base them on, but most of us don't make money on property values. We buy homes to live in, I'm not retail. So, you know, whereas the builders are making money on the value of my property because it's going up so they can collect annually from it.
Yeah, that's why the self-was were.
The thing is, the math, you know, even 2006, when homes went down temporarily, they didn't use the same formula to reduce the taxes. They maintained them and they kept raising them. So they only use the formula where they want to or when they want.
Yes.
So, you know, the thing is, I'm saying that we have to realize that eventually we might have to, you know, share the sacrifice. As much as we already are, we're going to have to do it even more. We're gonna have to sacrifice a lot of things personally, everybody, every individual.
You know, last week, last trustee meeting, we had a presentation with Johnson Controls. It's a project that we've had going for five years. We got the first financial results for that. We invested $10 million, okay? Most of that money is going to come back to us from reduced expenses. And our electric bill was going down $400,000 a year. Those are installation in buildings, solar panels, electric cars, all of the things that we've done. And we're very conscious about it. Is, is something we do gonna cost our taxpayers money? Very sensitive. And, you know, I'm the numbers guy and sit down, go like a hawk on the, on the project every year. You know, posted stamps went from two, two cents to whatever they are now.
You know, just, just pointing to this hopefully in the dust and those. And we'll finish up with this. You know, the train station, that's a $5 million investment that's being made for the solar. We got a $3 million grant from the state. Understand what? The IRS has a rebate that they give you, another about a million, million and a quarter. This 5.2 million dollar project will cost us about a million and a half dollars. But it will save us the 40%. So we're very rich. I'm a believer. I don't want to pay for anything. We bundled together money to pay shoes to try to, we have part of the budget every year, we pay a portion of the village. You go outside the village, you'll find potholes in the village. You'll, you'll find holes in the roads out of you. So we've gotten probably over the last 20 years, close to $1 million in grants, which give roads, the projects. So wherever we can get it, we get it.
Hopefully those grants for green energy won't go away in the near future.
Well, this is where we take advantage of everything that we have now.
I think I'll buy an electric car now.
Yeah, we got grant money.
Especially if it comes from overseas.
And we've got grant money.
Yeah, we just bought an electric car with 100% of grant money. From New York State, grant money.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you too. Thank you for, for, well, this is new to me, so. But if there's anything I can do to help you voice an opinion to anybody else, I'd be more than happy to lend a hand.
Well, maybe we should get together and talk a little more about the.
I'm all for that.
I'm serious.
I, you know, I was in Europe for 12 years. I learned a lot of things. Their system is very different from mine. But they're very active, you know, and intelligent, so. I know, I might have some go up. Thank you.
I could serve a couple of downspeak, appreciate it.
What you do here?
A motion to adjourn, so.